Good evening. I call to order the December 16, 2020 Business Meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in our audience to please silence your cellphones and electronic devices. Ms. Bolton, please lead us in the pledge.
Thank you, Madam President. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Wagner, please call roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Present.
Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Mrs. Bowers?
Here.
Mr. Lindy?
Here.
Mr. Messer?
Present.
Mr. Morosky?
Here.
President Jones?
Here. Members of the public who wish to speak during hearing, the public must request to do so during the first 10 minutes after the start of the meeting. To speak, you will need to send a request by clicking the chat button, submit your name, your affiliation to district, your school community, and your contact information if you want a direct response to any questions you might have. In keeping with the board's standard practice for hearing the public, you must click the camera icon when you are recognized to speak. Individuals who request to be heard after the first 10 minutes of the meeting will not be recognized to speak during this meeting. Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting, December 2, 2020, the business meeting, December 2, 2020, the special meeting, December 7, 2020, and the business meeting, December 7, 2020.
The note is all moved. Thank you. Is there a second? I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Minutes are approved as presented. Okay, Ms. Bowers, please present.
Me.
That will be you. Please present. For 2020 Student Achievement and District Instructional Performance Committee Meeting Board.
Alrighty, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I have before me the student achievement met on December 4, 2 o'clock, and our first update was from Ms. Connie Salano, Director of Performance and Accountability. She reported some background information about some changes in the federal and graduation rates as the change from every student succeeds act came into play after every child succeeds. Some district trends, she gave us an overview of a 10-year span trend from as far as our rates, and there has been a comparison for the 10-year span. There's been an increase in the district's four-year rate of 22.1 percentage point we've improved, and we've also increased in our five-year rate of 21.2 percentage rate over the 10-year span. In addition, we talked about some graduation trends. She identified at least 12 of our schools over the four-year graduation rate, we improved double digits ranging from 13% to 73%, and we also had some increase of a five-year graduation rate, 12 schools for a four-year, 12 schools for a five-year, double-digit gains from 2010 to 20 from approximately 11% to about 72-point percentage increase. And I do want to highlight that Euler School experienced a 73.0 percentage point increase in their four-year graduation rate, so kudos to them. And then we had a couple of schools pulled out, Warner Hills and SCPA, 99.1% for three to five consecutive years respectively. Then we had seven schools that experienced high four-year graduation rates, and we have five schools that experienced high five-year graduation rates. So I want, and those are all listed in the report. She did talk also about the federal graduation rates for the four-year rate for 2020 was a little bit lower than the state's four-year rate. We have at least 13 schools that showed a lower federal rate for the 2020 graduation year. Deputy Superintendent Amat noted for us in particular that changes in any type of staff man or administration could affect an individual's school's progress and that graduation rate is some of the, some barriers that probably could occur also. So then, we moved on, and there's a chart in there that has all the data that I'm speaking of. Then we also had a report out from Assistant Superintendent, I'm sorry, Assistant Director Christine Reeves, I'm giving everybody Assistant Superintendent titles, and Director Ms. Margaret Hall, and she gave us some trend data about our student services, identification and referrals, IEP update. She also noted that she has not had the report from the 1920, that's coming out soon, I think. She's coming back in 2021 to give us the update on what that evaluation update will be from last year. The superintendent gave a good report, an overview of, an update for her mid-year progress, that's all in our, in our report. She connected some key points in student center decision-making, health and safety that we, you know, had to adjust regarding some of the things with COVID, optimize capability, make good points and reflections on that, community engagement and growth. But she also added a presentation on, well, it was, it's entitled Superintendent's Goals and Results that I thought was connected with the review, but I may have an inquiry about that. Nevertheless, all of that is in the report. Other business, House Bill 404. I had, I brought to the committee's attention that I, that we were presented with a letter from several school administrators, counselors, and teachers about House Bill 404, which was signed by the governor and stated the districts have the allowance of bypassing or refraining from utilizing teacher evaluations, which is part of the bill. So I just wanted to make sure that I brought that to the committee's attention, that we did receive that letter. There was an action item from Mr. Morosky, that he wanted to have more information or have the board meeting, have it presented to the board about Iowa test results that were coming out soon, and that he wanted to know data on how that, who was tested and things like that. So Deputy Superintendent Amat was able to identify that at least 1,000 students to date had taken the exam, I guess, at first time, and then she also explained that there will be some retake dates, and that Director of Testing, Justin, will coordinate with others to see about placing and develop a plan and how that would look for those who would like to take the test logistically. And so also, we had a couple of hearing of the public, presenters, CFT President Sellers, and also CFT Rep Kendra Phelps was presented also with reference to House Bill 404. And these are the student achievement minutes from December, before I add some of these as written.
Okay, thank you. Do board members have questions or comments?
Yeah, as I, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a comment. As I was reviewing this and I'm thinking through, when Superintendent did a presentation to the committee regarding her goals, I assume that this was part of her proposed goals and checkpoints, but now I'm thinking I need more clarity as to what that actually was.
Oh.
Or what that was in reference to.
Yeah, and, and we are gonna, I'm gonna ask the superintendent to provide some clarity, but I also wanted to add to that. I have a question sort of along those same lines. I was, and I still am, after reading over these again last night, I am really confused about what, what drove these measures to being developed the way they are. There is some confusion about whether or not this was decided, that it was decided to have her address her performance measures, or her performance measures as part of her performance review, or if this was a response to the assignment that was given to her by Mr. Lindy. So there is some confusion. And so there are actually two questions. One has to do with where things stand with this mid-year sort of establishing priorities for the mid-year review, and the second piece of that is, is this aligned with the assignments as was given by Mr. Lindy that relates to the refocus of our strategic plan? So hopefully, that, hopefully my questions are clear, Superintendent. I'm gonna ask you if you would mind sort of speaking to that and provide an understanding to us what, or at least let us know what your understanding is.
Yeah, so a couple of months ago, I was asked during a board meeting, do I identify the priorities for the district for this year? And so I did say that the priorities are centered around student achievement, health and safety were among the top priorities for the district, and I believe at the time, and I can't remember off the top of my head if engagement was one, was the third one. And so I remember very specifically at a board meeting, Mr. Lindy, Board Member Lindy asked about what the priorities were. And so each time I was asked about it, I gave that same response, not understanding that I think he was looking for some very specific measures. So then if we fast forwarded to the Student Achievement Committee, back in the summer, when I met with the Student Achievement Committee, there were outlined the five goal areas, and I put some metrics down for each one of those areas. At the time, I did not have, this was during the summer, community engagement, if you remember, or remember Bowers in there, and so you said, no, you had to go back and put in community engagement, which I did. I was trying to limit it to three, and so I did go back in and add community engagement, and I believe the last one that I added was growth. And I'm doing this based upon memory from way back in the summer. So, so then, most recently, I did have a conversation with Board Member Lindy because I was trying to really understand what he was asking me for, to make sure that I could provide that. And so as a result of the conversation we had, then I put together a presentation for SAC, for SAC's consideration. And so that's where we are in terms of my understanding of what it is that I'm supposed to do.
Okay, so I see your hand, Mr. Messer, go ahead.
Yeah. You know, I-
We can't hear you, we can't hear you.
Oh, hold on.
That's better.
Yeah.
I always have to adjust when we go back out and come back in to select the right speaker. Yeah, so what my assessment of this is, you know, lots of companies were off on what they had planned to do in 2020, and there were kind, you kind of had to adjust and pivot to a new world kind of in record time. So what was our priorities in the strategic plan, which turned into our 2020 annual plan, all changed in, in March, and everything, you know, for everybody. So my takeaway is, this is an opportunity for, you know, we've, we've set the high-level parameters for the strategic plan by engaging all these community partners, et cetera. I think this is a great opportunity at the start of the new year, and I, knowing the superintendent, she's already begun this process, but to refresh the strategic plan with current day assumptions, because those assumptions are what drive what you do in the plan. And then I think if that were done, then we could have that plan presented on the 16th, kind of the, here's the refresh, you know, we assumed this many students, here's where we are with this, we assumed this, now we're gonna change it to this. So we would kind of get the updated 2021 version of our strategic plan, and once we aligned on that, then the superintendent could say, great, now here are the four key measures, you know, because I think all of us agree, like, we don't need the superintendent to give us 20 different things, you know, it's, it's good for us to put priority on that, but I think we have to finalize the refresh of the strategic plan for them to then build the 2021 plan, which would then allow her to then say, and then here are the core measures that I will be held accountable to, and of course, hold the team accountable to based on what they do.
Okay.
Either efficient way kind of in making sure that we're keeping things fresh for 2021.
Okay, Ms. Bowers, I'm here, please.
Yes, Ryan, I, I'm totally in agreement with you. I guess for me is process and, and, and protocol, because when I, when Superintendent, when you presented this in SAC, I guess I was not clear on, you're right, we do need a refresh, we do have to do that, but we have to do that as a group. And so you presented to us with the idea of presenting it to the board, I got it, but we had not had any discussion. We, as a group, I don't think have had any discussion about this. Is that correct? Am I, am I assuming that nobody's been discussing this as a group? Department you presented.
I, I think, Ms. Bowers, what, I, I think what Mr. Messer is saying, that we had agreed, this is everybody, all the board members had said, well, we want to, on January 16th, we want to take a look at the strategic plan, refresh the strategic plan, and then align our priorities with that. Now with that comes, and I think the interest, and this is where maybe Mr. Lindy can provide some clarity, I think Mr. Lindy's suggestion was that, that the superintendent identifies sort of what her top three priorities would be. So I think in essence, you know, that sort of, I believe that that's kind of what she presented to the student achievement under the belief that this is what was being asked of her. So I think that you're right in that I am, and this is why I'm raising the question, because I think it's more around proceed, I mean, process, you know, how do we want to approach this and, and in the best way? So I'm thinking, and, and maybe the board, and Mike, I saw your hand up too, I think, I guess what I'm saying is, would it make sense for us, I think I'm agreeing with Mr. Messer, would it make sense for us to take a look at this as we do our work on January 16th regarding the strategic plan? And if this makes sense for her to align in that way with, with what we finalize, then it's all well and good. But I was, I was confused about whether this was sort of being recommended as the final product that would also be her measures around her performance review. So I was very confused about that. Well, I hope I'm making sense, but, so that's where I am. So Mr. Morosky first, and then Ms. Bolton.
I'll let Ms. Bolton go if it's on this topic, because mine was just gonna be add clarity to what I was asking about Iowa. So I'll let Ms. Bolton go if it's on this topic.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, I guess I'm with the group in being confused. I just thought that this was her mid-year check-in.
Is that?
It says proposed goals, above the topic, it says Superintendent Midyear Progress.
What that, yes, that's correct, that one is, but if you flip the paper, that chart is not a part of her report regarding her mid-year progress.
Okay, that rest of the clarity I needed. So the first page is what it's, what it is or not?
The first page is correct. Her updates, her mid-year progress, how she's doing, right.
And then the superintendent, so what the confusion was, was the superintendent's goals and results for January 2020 dash.
Was a presentation that she presented at SAC Committee, that, that did happen. But based on, but it wasn't requested by SAC, that wasn't a request from SAC.
Okay, Superintendent, I saw your hand up.
Carolyn, I also am happy to chime in, I'm not on video, but I'm happy to share my perspective here.
Okay, well, maybe this is a good time for you to chime in, Ben, I think you can help provide some clarity, because the original assignment came from you.
Yeah, yeah, and I appreciate it, Carolyn, and I think, let me share, you know, where I was coming from and where I think, if I try to synthesize where we are and what would come next, I think the headline for me is that all the things people are talking about, I think are really good and important steps in the right direction, and I think all of these things are moving in a really good, good direction. For my part, what led to the assignment was, I'd like to see us as a board, get to a place where we've got on one page clarity around a small number of most important priorities for this year that are aligned to the strategic plan, that have some clear outcomes for what we want to make true this year, and that we have regular visibility, I'd say on a monthly level, into how we're doing against those things. And that's what led me to make that assignment some meetings ago. I, I have to tell you that when I read the minutes from SAC, I was really excited about what the superintendent put in there, and I was excited for very specific reasons. I think chiefly, it's the, it's the tightest and shortest list of outcome measures that I've seen, it seems clearly aligned to the strategic plan, and if I was reading it right, we were gonna get some monthly visibility into how we're doing. I, I do think there are things I'd like to see us do next, you know, they include like setting some of these targets in advance, and also I think inserting some equity checks so we can look for disparate outcomes by race and possibly by income. But I think the headline for me was, wow, this is really coming a long way and it's really exciting. When it comes to process, this is, this is my last thought, like in terms of how we get there, because I do think Pam raised some important questions about that, as have others. I, I don't, I truthfully don't know what the right process is to get us there, I think we could do that through some conversations on January 16th, we could do that tonight, we could do a combination. I'd like to do, I'd like us to get there the right way, I just wanted to clarify the picture that, that was driving me, and also how much progress I think there's been.
Okay, thank you. Superintendent, did you have a comment before, because, did you want to comment on it before we close this out? We, I guess I think we do, I want to make another comment, but I'll wait until after you're done.
Yes, the only comment that I have is that the mid-year progress, to Ms. Bolton's point, I went over this with SAC and provided pages upon pages of documentation as my mid-year. But in trying to fulfill the assignment given by Mr. Lindy, then I went back and did a revision that was the second page or the back page that Board Member Bowers was talking about. And so I think that that may have been where the confusion came in. I was trying to serve two different things.
Okay. Okay, so Ms. Bolton, I saw you first, and then Mr. Messer.
Yeah, I appreciate the clarity from the superintendent, and I also, I, I hope this doesn't sound negative, but you know, every board member, there are seven of us, could ask this sort of assignment of this, from the superintendent, and then she would be serving instead of, you know, the board, individual members, and that could get quite confusing as to what is, you know, afoot. So just to clear, this is, the second sheet is your response to Mr. Lindy's assignment. And it, it's a response based, you're, you're responding, but it does not necessarily, that assignment did not necessarily reflect what the board may be asking of you, which is the problem. And, but I, I think, I think he's right, it's, all of this is good and, and, and great, but you know, I think that gives us pause to have a conversation on the 16th.
Exactly, and Mr. Messer, go ahead, and then we're gonna close this out. Go ahead, Mr. Messer.
I think, you know, this is gonna be a great learning opportunity for us to think through this, and get into a process where you start with plan, then you talk about priorities in that plan, and then you speak to metrics, and then ownership, and just get into a sequence of that. And I tried to bring that up when this comment kind of came up to the floor at the assignment, that, you know, of course, everything's different in the strategic plan, I think we always have to start there, and then work our way down, and let's face it, it's 2020, there's nobody that wants, I think everybody's just ready to shut things off now, I think we owe it to our team to let them shut it all off and come fresh in the new year, let's do our update to the plan, go to the 16th, and we'll have a well-established plan and everything that flows from that for the new year, but I think at this point, you know, we're too late into 2020 to be working through some of these things, and I recommend, let's go to the 16th.
Okay, so we're, let's, in order, Ms. Bolton, is this on this topic, and can it be short so we can move on?
Yes, it's, it's on the SAC minutes, I just wanted to make sure that we are complimentary of the administration and the work that's been done regarding graduation rates. This is an impressive effort.
Absolutely.
It's remarkable, and-
It is remarkable. Yes, and I agree, but I wanted to close off this last conversation and say-
Karen.
Yes.
Jones, can I circle back to my comment I wanted to make that's not about this?
I was gonna close this conversation out first.
Oh, why not?
Yeah, all I want to say is that I also want to, you know, I think I understand it better now, but again, and I think what everybody is basically saying, there was some confusion, so let's be clear about that, and contextually, everything looks good from a process perspective, I think we all agree that this is definitely part, and it, we're getting a jump on what we had talked about that we would do on January 16th, and I want to, I want to assure Mr. Lindy in particular, that this is part of what we had talked about doing on the 16th. And I think that, given its time, and now that the superintendent has sort of fleshed it out even some more, I think that'll just help us on the 16th when we do finally talk about it and finalize it. So, so that's all it is, hopefully it's a little more clear to people, but I do think that the process was, was sort of the issue. Okay, so Mr. Morosky, your point?
Actually, James wanted to make a quick point, no, thank you, President Jones, sorry I interrupted, I didn't know you were, you were wrapping that up, I apologize. I just wanted to, the reason I brought up the Iowa piece is what I was interested in specifically was if Iowa is administered in the kids' schools, and some schools had varying attendance, I just wanted to make sure that if people wanted to take the test, they had an opportunity to take the test, which is why I inquired, and I was, my, my question was answered very well, as Ms. Bowers noted, and it seems that kids have a lot of opportunity to take it and retake it, so I just wanted to offer that little piece of clarity, that's all.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, let's see, if we're ready to move on, I believe, Mr. Morosky, if you would present the December 4 revised Policy and Equity Committee Report.
Yes, I will. So the, the Policy Committee met on December 4, 2020 via Blue Jeans, and first, we discussed the student and staff network, Internet Acceptable Use and Safety Policies, as James very excited. And we have put those back to committee as Ms. Bates had had some, some awesome advice, in my opinion, regarding two things, one, including languages to who is actually responsible for this, i.e., it's not the board, and all throughout, there was language of the board this, the board that, I think Ms. Bolton had the same concern. The other one was to cross-reference the burgeoning and hopefully new anti-racism policy, 2256 in the language. We have two resolutions for these two policies, 7504 and 7504, that you will see tonight, the red line version included in there that I'll call out when I introduce them. Also, we continue to look at the anti-racism policy and the committee, without belaboring this point, committee agreed to pass it on to the full board for passage tonight, it was given a number, 2256. Very exciting, a lot of community input and board input, so that will be before us tonight, later on in the agenda as well. Lastly, very exciting discussion with Paul McDowell regarding office. Gets excited about this stuff, he's gonna be going to these schools, he gets excited. Lastly, very exciting discussion with Paul McDull regarding gets excited about this stuff. He's going to be going to these schools. He gets excited. The Office of Diversity and Inclusion, which as you may recall, Board Member Masser had been extremely adamant about in committee. We had talked about as a full board and, you know, particularly at a time, you know, when Hamilton County just hired, you know, Diversity Equity Inclusion Officer, Children's Way overdue, hired one. And all folks are sort of clicking on the same page. We've long highly biased opinion been at the forefront of this issue, being a public school district and having a superintendent and a team who take this very seriously, but very encouraging, best part of the minutes, I thought, that Paul McDull relayed to us that he, his office is working on a job description for a person who would oversee this department and working on when to post and fill the position once a funding source has been confirmed. He also reported that the superintendent and the treasurer are in discussion regarding potential funding for the position. So thank you, Superintendent and Treasurer. This is so good. And I also updated that in conjunction with the burgeoning policy 2256, this Diversity Equity Inclusion Office, there is also the curriculum team working on an anti-racist curriculum. So all three of those things happening at once is pretty powerful way to round out this school year and begin the next calendar year, I think. And then lastly, our standard policy review, General Counsel Hoyng reviewed policy 7550, which is the use of district-owned equipment and policy 75, oh, sorry, 7550.01, use of electronic communication devices. And we recommended that the policies be approved tonight, which you'll see later on in the agenda. Lastly, the minutes reflect in the hearing of the public, Kendra Phelps of CFT requested copies of documents discussed in the meeting, which we said, no problem. In fact, I think going forward, we're going to try to make those more readily available on the website or something. This is, you know, we're talking about these policies. We put them up on the screen. And, you know, I think everybody here has been on Policy Committee. And so if you don't have them here and they're on the screen, you're just kind of flying through them. It's hard to digest them. So maybe looking at different protocol for that going forward. And then she expressed just excitement about the anti-racism and obviously diversity and inclusion. Present the minutes as written.
Thank you. Any questions or comments about policy minutes? Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting. I need a motion to approve.
So moved?
Thank you. Everybody has, everybody's on mute, so I can't hear you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, all righty. Superintendent Mitchell, if we were at the item for presentations, please, our first presentation of the evening.
Great, thank you. So our first presentation this evening is under the Board Goal, Strategic Plan Goal, Students and Decision Making, and Assistant Superintendent Shawna Murphy, along with some of our partners, will be talking about our athletics for this year. So Assistant Superintendent Murphy, thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Mitchell. I'm very excited to be with you, to share with you a few updates about our athletic department as well as the partnership with activities beyond the classroom. We have been extremely passionate over the last several months about a couple of areas in particular, and that includes being persistent and persevering in spite of this COVID season. Next slide, please. And so the conversation tonight, we joined by our athletic manager, Josh Harden, and longtime partner, Activities Beyond the Classroom, their director, Mr. Brian Leschner. But first, our three key messages tonight include CPS Athletic Safety and Success During COVID-19, Activities Beyond the Classroom, and how they were able to pivot with us and support not only the basic needs of our students, but also their academic needs. And then finally, the positive impact of athletics on academic achievement. So at this time, I will ask if our manager, Mr. Harden, could join us. Next slide.
Thank you, Assistant. Yes, thank you, Assistant Superintendent Murphy. Next slide, please. Thank you, Board, President Jones, Vice President Masser, and the Board for your hard work, and happy holidays to you all. Just want to kick off, I'll go through a quick athletics update and then introduce our partners with Activities Beyond the Classroom. You know, as the pandemic began and many things were on pause, we know CPS Athletics were able to step in to support our students in city through Collaborative Care Initiative. We worked with Jessica Shelley and her team at our Food Hub sites. And we were able to oversee just over $50,000 in monetary donation, nearly $400,000 in non-monetary donation. And I just want to formally be able to thank all of our partners that stepped up to truly collaborate and care for our students, you know, during that time. ABC was one of those pivotal and lead partners at a couple of our school sites and locations. And a special thanks to my staff who was able to pivot on the athletic side of things and then some of our school ADs. So as we talk about returning to play, you know, CPS Athletics did host many coaches' meetings and engage parents and students to start the school year through this new virtual world. We had great athletic director collaboration through our partnership with Activities Beyond the Classroom, consult with our high school principals, myself and ABC. We support the athletic directors at our 14 high schools, with nine of those being employed by Activities Beyond the Classroom. At the start of the pandemic, we worked with those school athletic directors to create a virtual resource center with videos for weight training, online practice, check-ins, and many other great resources. Actually, yesterday was officially the first interscholastic athletic administrator day. So fully want to recognize their hard work and thank all those athletic directors as always do when we come on. Our Return to Play Manual, we took mandates and guidelines from the state and worked with neighboring districts and created a Return of Play Manual to support all of our schools and our student athletes going back to athletics safely in this new environment. We talked about adapt and grow. That was our theme for the summer. We did a summer training series for athletic directors. We worked together to create Plan A, B, and C, like many others throughout the district, and made the adjustments as needed to start the year. One area that we adjusted was our Athlete of the Month program. As you know, I've come on every year to introduce our Athlete of the Month winners. So we adapted, you can see here on this slide, we put them all in the fall. So instead of having one on a monthly basis, we just launched this, actually just yesterday, our six, three male, three female Athlete of the Month winners that excelled in the community, the classroom, and on their respective field of play. Next slide, please. As we started Fall Athletics, we, you know, we started on a pause. So we did adapt there as well. In doing so, we offered and launched a city championship in the sport of football and volleyball for schools that did an interstate tournament. Hughes Big Red was our volleyball champion, and Western Hills Mustangs were our football champion. I really want to recognize Assistant Athletics Manager Ricky Miller for his great work. As we know, we wanted to recognize our seniors. We've got some great partnerships coming up. We'll soon be releasing senior recognition videos through our partnership with Matose Visuals. And then we're excited to share from partnership with Activities Beyond the Classroom and CPS Athletics, a collaboration with the Cincinnati Bengals and Black owned as a way to recognize some of our fall seniors. We're excited to launch that information here in the coming weeks. Skip-level coaches' meetings. So we launched these this year where I met directly with coaches at all high schools in the district. This is one area that I took from the superintendent and her initiative. She did this with me. I got to sit down and hear my goals around all the district initiatives and what we were doing in athletics. And I took that, stole it from her, brought it over to athletics and met with all the coaches at every school in our district. And they had great ideas and we're looking forward to it. Next slide, please. Winter and Spring Update. So as we know, fall started with a junior high pause. We transitioned into winter and unpause junior high athletics, so excited for the opportunity for junior high student athletes. With no spectators at a winter contest, we have collaborated with our IT department to launch live streaming at all games. You can see a couple screenshots here of a few of our games, high quality. I want to recognize Brent Langhorn in our department, who, as you guys know, oversees elementary athletics, adapted to this year and has led this initiative for us. He was grinding, going to every single school, checking Wi-Fi, checking different iPads and working with the IT department to make sure we had live stream set up for our games. And as we look ahead to spring, we're consistently meeting with our athletic directors on a weekly basis to ensure that we're prepared for the spring. Next slide. The last time I came and presented to the Board, I did present on the AAA Pathway, initiative that we started in the 1819 school year, and we're very proud of in the District Athletics Office. And our opportunity to start this initiative to fill a need of holistically supporting our student athletes. Just a quick overview, basically, we have a supplemental staff through Schedulee, whether it's a teacher or a coach, someone in the building that is checking grades for all of our student athletes and then offering them more support and resources, connecting with their families and one-on-ones to fully support those student athletes. In the past, we hosted, last year, a SALT Conference Student Athlete Leadership Team Conference. Started an advisory council. We work closely with the NCAA to update our eligibility center and have collaborated with the Curriculum Department and our College Department. Last year, we did present at the Council of Great City Schools. Board Member Bates was there for that in Louisville. And from that presentation, there was a member from Education Magazine that was there and decided to do a highlight story on CPS and the AAA Pathway. So very honored to be a part of that. Presently, we continue our ACT Boot Camp, and that continues to grow. Our student athletes meet with our partner Larry Hodge. And those students that need a bump in ACT scores will meet with him consistently leading up to an ACT test. We have been able to gather data, like I shared in our last presentation, over these past years. And I'm excited for Brian Leschner to come on and share more data with you guys from our partnership with ABC and Strive. And as we move forward in the future, we're looking for continued growth and the impact of this program through support and resources with our partnership with Activities Beyond the Classroom. We're creating a video now that shares more information about the AAA Pathway for students, families, and all of our staff members. And we're going to be growing and expanding our student athlete leadership teams to the elementary level with a partnership from elementary to high school. And we've got a few pilots coming up. One on a dive deep into junior high program support, another on socio-emotional support. And with the AAA Pathway, I would like to recognize Armin Tatum and Stephanie Price for their great work. Next slide. And now on to our next big initiative. Super excited about the Team CPS Athletics Initiative. The Together Everyone Achieves Movement is our newest initiative that will launch in 2021. Very excited about the potential impact of this program. Decide to truly engage our community to support athletics and grow parent support and engagement in extracurriculars and athletics. You know, this initiative will focus on fundraising, community and parent involvement, and ultimately building school pride and culture. We just had our first kickoff meeting with one of our pilot schools literally a couple hours ago with Charlene Myers and Riverview East. Very excited about the potential there and to be able to share more with you guys about the Team CPS Athletics Initiative. At this time, I would like to introduce Brian Leschner, Executive Director of Activities Beyond the Classroom, to share more information on our partnership and how they support CPS. Brian?
Am I in?
Yes, go ahead, Brian.
Thank you. This is the first time I've ever done this. Josh, thank you for your introduction. Thank you for your innovation. Thank you for your hard work and thank you for everything else you do. You're a great partner. A picture on here yet? All right. Thank you to the administration and the Board for the opportunity to present here tonight. And thank you to Assistant Superintendent Shawna Murphy for her commitment to and support of the CPS ABC Partnership. And especially thank you to the Board and Superintendent Mitchell for their wisdom during these mistrying times. Next slide, please. Now go back one, sorry. ABC's mission is to ensure that Cincinnati Public School students participate in activities beyond the classroom that will help them develop the skills they need to succeed in life. This supports CPS's strategic plan in the two main areas listed here. Create equitable access to fine arts, interscholastic athletics, and opportunities to explore students' career interests and leadership through special interest clubs and activities. We'll hear more about that later. Create unmatched opportunities for meaningful student, family, and community engagement that positively impacts student outcomes and inspire collaborations. Next slide, please. This slide presents traditional ABC programs. Seventh through 12th Athletics, Elementary Athletics, were the lead agency at 10 schools this year. As you all know, we started the CPS Jazz Festival, was going to be set up this year but got canceled. After-school World Language Programs and After-School Enrichment Programs that we call ABC Clubs. We're very proud of our partnership with CPS. Next slide, please. As we all know, March 2020 changed everything. We could no longer deliver extracurricular programming as we had in the past. And as with many organizations, we needed to pivot in ways that we never had before. Thanks to our strong relationship with CPS, we were able to gain a strong understanding of the immediate needs of CPS children and families and respond to those needs quickly. First, we focused on meeting the basic needs of CPS families. This included school supplies for 350 student athletes for remote learning in partnership with the Bengals. A CARES Act $50,000 grant and shelf-stable food delivered to families for ABC is the lead agency. As Josh pointed out, we were the lead at two collaborative and care schools. And through a relationship with the Downtown Residence Council, we collected and distributed personal care items for students at downtown schools. Next slide, please. In addition to basic needs, we partnered with CPS to support academic needs. This includes parent engagement, before and after-school tutoring, ACT Boot Camp for student athletes, academic coaching for students experiencing homelessness, and support of college credit plus programming. Next slide, please. During this time, we still maintained our commitment to extracurricular activities. We didn't walk away from it. We just had to do it a different way. In partnership with Josh and CPS Athletics, we supported virtual resource centers for student athletes, safe activities for children in foster care with a partnership with Legal Aid, Jobs and Family Services. It's their KISSER program. Before and after-school mindfulness, wellness, and physical activities is coming in the second semester. And music instruction through one of our donor-directed funds, the Ben Carlson Burn Fund. Next slide, please. Because extracurriculars are the core of our mission, we never stop thinking about how we can improve our programs to provide the best possible opportunities for CPS students. To that end, we also continue to study how our programs affect children's academic successes. So in our spare time, we partnered with Strive, now known as Cradle to Career Cincinnati, to ask a fundamental question. Does a student's involvement in athletics affect their academic success? Next slide, please. We looked at four indicators to understand if a student's participation in athletics affected their academic success. Attendance, GPA, ACT scores, and graduation rates. We have a 28-page study that I decided not to put on the slide deck tonight. The highlights are student athletes have a higher average attendance rate than non-student athletes. Student athletes, they're encouragingly their average attendance rate is higher than the state benchmark. With GPA, student athletes have a higher average unweighted GPA than non-student athletes. Next slide, please. With regard to ACT scores, across the district where students have taken the ACT in the past three years, there's a higher percentage of student athletes who met the composite ACT benchmark. That's a composite score of 22 or above. And for graduation for 2019, student athletes had a higher graduation rate. Next slide, please. As in all things, the picture isn't perfect. There are many opportunities to improve programming. So, when we look deeper, not all student subgroups have the same positive effect across all academic outcomes. There are opportunities to enhance current athletic offerings, particularly for subgroups of students who are not performing academically as well as their peers, and expand athletic offerings for students who are underrepresented in current student athletes. Athletics. Next slide, please. So, there's an opportunity among Hispanic students to increase participation. There's a traditional opportunity to increase participation among female students in CPS. And then Josh's, this is something Josh and his team have worked on, and we've worked on. We need to streamline athletics between elementary and grade seven through 12, so that there's a continuing path from when you start in CPS all the way to when you graduate to turn involved in something else. Next slide, please. I'd like to again thank the district for having us present here tonight. I'd like to thank them for hearing Josh present on how safety, security, and advancements were made even during, and success were made during COVID-19, and how ABC pivoted to support basic needs and academics, and positive impact of athletics on academic achievement. Any questions or comments? And when it comes to the Strive report, I'm not a social scientist, but please be kind.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Leschner, and thank you, Josh. Do board members have questions or comments? And if you do, please unmute. Ms. Bowers?
Yes, thank you, President Jones, and kudos to Assistant Superintendent Murphy and her team, Athletic Director Josh Harden, and thank you, Mr. Leschner, for your update. I just want to highlight all the good things that you guys have been doing, successfully returning to play. I love the city championship for fall sports for our football and our volleyball teams, who do not, do stay, but they did have some type of higher level competition. I thought that was very creative. We're excited about the ACT Bootcamp that we're going to be able to continue. Josh, how you talked about expanding the athletic leadership team, rolling it back to elementary school. I love that. Brian, the CCP programming partnership that ABC is doing to help be more focused on that. I like that. I like the data. I like all the whole bunch of stuff. But what I wanted to say, I have two questions. Two questions. One question is the team fundraising. Josh, and I think you mentioned this, and you said that's a fundraising arm. Is that like a separate 501(c), like some schools have a separate fundraising component within their schools, such as like the Friends of SCBA or the Friends of Dater? Is that a school-run thing or a district-run thing, which happened? And I think Western Hills as pilots. If that's one question. The second question is, when can I get the link to the live stream game, since I cannot go? And I'm missing all of the basketball games, and I don't know how to get connected. And that's all the points that I have, but I have those two questions.
Sure. Yep, so I'll take them in order. So, the team initiative kind of came about the start of this year, and we put together a committee of different-sized schools, some schools that have had more parental engagement, some that have not, some that have had more community engagement, some that have not. It's kind of like you would think of an athletic boosters program, but reworking it a little bit for it to be run through the athletic department. So, it would be led by the athletic directors at each of the individual schools, but it would include parent of student athletes, coaches of student athletes, community members that assist with a goal of raising funds, having more volunteers that work in the concession stands when those come back. So, the feel of a boosters program, but run through our athletics department. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, but would it be like a separate arm, like not connected with the district, or is it district? Like, is it like a 501(c) setup or no?
It would not be. Nope. It would be a district initiative, once again, partnering with activities beyond the classroom, with our athletic directors that are...
Okay. And can I get the live stream?
And then the live stream, yeah, I'll push out a, you know, there was another person that reached out to me. I'll push out a district-wide email to all of our staff. But basically, all of the schools create their own live stream links through our setup, and they've all been pushing those out through Twitter. So, if you go to the school's Twitter, which you don't have to have a Twitter to be able to get the link, you just type it in. We've got a spectator guide that I'll send out. And in that spectator guide, it does have every single school's Twitter link. You can go on to that Twitter link when they have games, and they'll give you the live stream link on that Twitter, and then you can watch it. It's been really fun for, I know, me personally and our staff, whereas in the past, we would have to select one game. My wife might not like it, but on Fridays, I got my computer screen up, and I'm watching like four different games at one time. And so, I know that we've got other partners, people that do that. I'll share that out district-wide and make sure you get all the link.
Okay, thank you. Great. Any additional questions or comments, Ms. Bolton?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I want to thank Josh and Brian, and of course Shawna, for this presentation. I think it's very telling that this presentation occurred on the same night that the SAC Committee was able to share with us the graduation rates. These are completely interrelated. That recommitment to high school, giving children the opportunity and young people to have extracurricular activities, the athletics program. Ms. Bates and I can remember too that 10 or so years ago, there are board battle scars about establishing ABC. And I know Mr. Leschner wears a few of those scars along the way. When we look back and we see what all has happened, I cannot compliment the ABC folks enough. It is critical that they stepped in, these folks stepped in when nobody else would, and they raised the money. They also were willing to assume all kinds of responsibilities that the district found would be easier if others handled it, whether it was the CLCs or whether it was other kinds of programs, because they could function frankly more efficiently, or because some people may want to give more money to a quasi-foundation instead of directly to the schools originally anyway. I believe very strongly that when Mr. Leschner began this, I'm not sure he fully understood what could happen as a result of this. But his folks did, and I really appreciate that. And I even want to go back as far and forgive me, all the way back, and Melanie will recall this, to Kent Cashel, who was very determined to have extracurriculars return to our high schools. This is monumental, and we are so fortunate, and the kids have benefited greatly. And I thank staff and ABC, and I'm thrilled with those graduation rates. And do more, do better, do bigger, because this is phenomenal, especially for an urban district. Thanks to all these people that support us.
Great. Any other questions or comments? Well, I want to, I want to again thank Mr. Harden and Mr. Leschner and Assistant Superintendent Murphy for the presentation. And Mr. Leschner, I can't wait until that jazz band gets going again. That was one of my favorites. I love sports, but I really love that jazz band. Okay. Thank you all so much. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wonderful. Superintendent, next presentation?
Yes. This evening, we're going to provide an update for you. We want to inform you of the health data for not only the city, the community, and CPS, but we also want to bring to you some things to consider as we think about going or bringing our students back into our schools in terms of blended learning. I believe it was several board meetings ago, the administration was given the assignment to bring back some metrics for the board to consider as we look forward to offering our kids the opportunity to come back to school. Before we begin the presentation, I want to highlight especially for our public, the fact that the reason Cincinnati Public Schools decided to go to distance learning was not because of the health of, in terms of our schools, they're very safe, and we'll be able to show you that data tonight as it relates to our schools being in session and the little spread that we actually saw. But the reason that we went to distance learning was because of the number of staff absences, in terms of staff members who were in isolation for having COVID-19 that they contracted in the community, or they were caring for someone, and so therefore they were in quarantine. So, tonight, we're going to have a presentation by our Chief Strategy Officer, who's going to provide the usual data that you see around the community health. And then we also are delighted to have Dr. Khan, a physician with Children's Hospital here, to provide some additional insights. And then, at the very end, we'll come back to kind of wrap it up in terms of some metrics that the board might want to consider as we think about bringing our students back into school. So, I'll turn it over to Sarah Trumbull Oliver. Thank you.
Good evening. School districts and health professionals have certainly learned a lot about COVID and COVID safety in schools over the past few months since schools began reopening in person. Right now, our city and the state of Ohio is seeing some of the highest rates of COVID. And at the same time, though, we are hearing new data about schools can be a safe place for students and staff with strict safety protocols. So, tonight, Dr. Khan and I hope to provide some additional context to help inform our decisions about when we can return to blended learning. So, as Ms. Mitchell mentioned, we're first going to start off on the next slide with reporting on some of the same school and community measures that we have been looking at regularly. So, first up, we have the Hamilton County Schools Staff and Student Cases. So, for the public schools in Hamilton County, last week, there were 155 new student cases and 120 new staff cases, and that is out of 114,000 students. This number is up from last week, but about the same as it was two weeks ago. On the next slide, you will see the CPS updated counts. There have been 202 student cases at CPS, 348 staff cases. The Health Department is reporting to us now six detectable in-school transmissions, and this is one student-to-student in-school transmission, and five staff-to-staff. There have been no detected transmissions from student to staff or vice versa. And Dr. Khan will talk a little bit later about the importance of this measure of in-school transmissions. Next slide will look familiar. This is our City of Cincinnati epidemiological curve. This shows the seven-day average of daily new cases in the city, which are the gray dots, and as you can see, has continued to rise in November and December. The next slide zooms in on the 14-day trend. We see that we have four green dots over the last 14 days, which is a decreasing seven-day average. The latest seven-day average for the city is 215 cases, which if you then divide by the city population, we're at 70 cases per 100,000. And so, remember that number for later, 70 cases per 100,000. On the next slide, you'll see that our positivity rate for the city is at 10.8. I know that's very tiny print. It's 10.8 for the city and 16.3 for Hamilton County outside of the city. And the next slide, the link to get positive test results is down below two days. And so, at this point, I will turn the next portion of the presentation over to Dr. Rob Khan.
Great. Thank you, everybody. Pleasure to be here. And I'll just say, from the pediatric community, thank you to all the educators and parents and kids carrying on during some pretty tough times. So, next slide. And the next one after that. Again, I represent Children's Hospital's efforts and support them in trying to achieve community and population health. And what we want to share here is our role in partnership with Hamilton County Public Health and the City of Cincinnati Public Health Department and the Health Collaborative in bringing COVID measures that can help inform school planning. And again, just emphasizing this is the COVID perspective. There are other key outcomes, benefits around social-emotional health, and benefits around learning that guide how collectively those three pieces around a whole child, whole family, whether it makes sense to be in school or not. So, I'm commenting purely on the COVID piece. Next slide. So, I wanted to reorient you. I presented this once before. I'll do a more abbreviated version, like what is the framework we recommend for thinking about opening? This has not changed since the last time we spoke, but I do want to walk through it again, just because we know trust, transparency, and collective thinking is the right way to make these really difficult decisions. And so, top of mind across much of the country has really been that the number-one indicator for in-person learning is how many cases are occurring in the school. What's the count? What's the rate? What's the trend? And in particularly, a subset of those, as Sarah mentioned earlier, is how much of that is popcorn-ing of cases coming in from the community versus actual transmission between students or between staff or between staff and students. So, number of cases, the amount of kids in quarantine, and I'd say CPS, because in its hybrid state, has maintained that six-foot difference. The amount of kids in quarantine has been low compared to other districts that are operating at three to six feet, given current quarantine recommendations. But you've got cases, you've got the amount of quarantine effect, you've got the knock-on effects, as Sarah said earlier, about staff absences from those two. And then, in support of achieving excellence and minimizing in-school transmission, is that measures of protective bundle use. And I'll return to that in a minute, but that's all the hard work everyone's been doing around masking, facing, and so on. So, those are the primary considerations. Next advance, please. And then, secondary is what we're used to hearing, what's happening surrounding the school, right? The school's not an island, surrounded by the community. What is happening in the community? Primary measures there would include the number of new cases. And as Sarah just mentioned, how many daily new cases per 100,000 people in the population. And we do that as a seven-day moving average. So, if everybody gets tested on a Monday and doesn't do it on a Sunday, we don't get big spikes and drops in the rates of positives, but a seven-day moving average of daily new cases. And then, is that trending up or trending down? It's really helpful to know. A single point on a line doesn't tell you what direction, where the puck is going. We try to look at the trend. And finally, that percent positive has, you know, a couple of meanings, but the primary meaning for most of us is how is the system doing keeping up with things? Like, can healthcare, public health, and others deliver the number of tests to meet the moment, given the incidence? And so, what you see there, again, percent of COVID tests that are positive demonstrates the adequacy of community testing, given the prevalence of disease. It's also indirectly representative of disease. There are other important measures of the system, including the one Sarah just mentioned, like turnaround time, right? So, you remember, there were days, there were periods in which it took six, seven, eight days to get your test back. That was a sign the community system was not performing adequately, given the stress. So, next slide. Oh, so, actually, one other quick point here, which would be, so now that kids have been remote, you know, how do we begin to think about forward look in the future as to when it's safe to come back? And what you start to do is say, okay, well, we don't have our full impact of primary measures to guide us. You drop, you drop back to the community measures, and you start to say, at what level in the community was associated with what level of impact inside the hospital? And I just highlighted the box there, which is like, there is no evidence-based guideline. We focus on what were the practical considerations at a given community incidence? What was the impact on cases, on in-school transmission, on staffing, and try to make some inferences as to when and if it will be safe to come back. Now, next slide. So, I've dropped back. I'm just going to give you a little bit of like, so what's the thinking behind that? This is a graphic I presented before. I'll just share it again. I'll just share it again, like dropping back, where were we in the summer? We were saying, well, we've got community measures and we were making guesses as to would schools be safe, right? We had the incidents, we had percent positive, we had other measures. Advance. Then came, you know, three, four months of in-school experience and hybrid experience in which we could begin to measure diligently, not just here, but across the county and across the nation, how many cases, how many quarantines, and how many absences. And the question has always been, how directly related is that community incidence to what's going to happen in the school? It's not a firewall, but it's, it's also not a porous sieve. Advance one more. And, and we offer this idea that comes from industry and from healthcare about the idea of a Swiss cheese defense against safety problems, which is how do you layer a series of interventions that increase the reliability of protecting us from bad things happening, right? So imagine if we had just done physical distancing and nothing else, the amount of virus that would have gotten into the schools. Well, we didn't just do that. We did physical distancing, we added ventilation, we have masking, hand hygiene, fast and sensitive testing, surface cleaning, contact tracing, and that idea of increasingly providing reliable protection against the virus causing havoc in the schools in terms of in-school transmission. And Superintendent Mitchell and Sarah and others have shared some of the really very impressive reliability data on how well the CPS staff and leadership and students have risen to the occasion and implemented these procedures. And so, you know, with that in mind, I think looking forward, it's going to be how, over the last four months, have community incidence rates been associated with the cases, quarantine, and absences? And I think Sarah's going to show you a little bit more data on that, especially given, advance one more time. We've gone from a period in which we were as low as seven per 100,000 to what Sarah just outlined, which is we're at 72 per 100,000. So given that, you know, tenfold increase in community incidence right now, how do we begin to make sense of when it's safe to bring kids in school? And, and I'll stop there. I want to thank you for every, again, for everything you do for kids and commit to continuing to support you all as you make your decisions through the spring. Sarah, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Rob. We can go to the next slide. So we do have some additional analysis to, to share with you guys that came from our review of the period of time we were in blended learning. And I want to say thank you to the Children's Hospital team and to the Cincinnati Health Department. Dr. Amin helped us with this analysis as well, although she couldn't be here tonight. She was a big part of helping us put this together. So this is the city epidemiological curve, but what we have seen, what we have changed on this scale is that this is the daily new cases per 100,000 on the scale. And so as Rob mentioned, this is a common ratio calculation. It's used by the CDC, Harvard, Ohio Health Department in order to help compare community rates among different regions that have different populations. So it's like a way to compare apples to apples. So looking at the city new cases per 100,000 here, we're going to zoom in on that little yellow portion, which is the time period that the decision was made to switch to distance learning due to the difficulties maintaining our safety protocols because of staff absences. And those staff absence, absences were due to COVID-positive individuals, quarantine individuals, people who are caring for others with COVID, or people with symptoms but not COVID, because according to our district safety plan, they're asked to stay home anytime they have symptoms. So let's go to the next slide, zooming in on that yellow portion. The graph at the top here is staff attendance during blended learning. And the blue line is certificated staff, and the orange line is civil service staff attendance. And the red arrow is indicating that time period when the decision was made for distance learning. So looking at that time period down below on the city epidemiological curve, that is the range in the yellow box that the community rate was around 40 cases per 100,000. And so we have learned by looking back at our data that this is the range we would need to be below to maintain our CPS safety protocols per our safety plan. And we know that these are the safety protocols that our, our regional health professionals emphasize are critical for in-person learning. And so if you think back to a few slides ago, we're at 70 right now. So one important note before we leave this slide is when you're hearing all these numbers flying around, it's important to remember if you're looking at the raw number of daily new cases or the daily new cases per 100,000, because a lot of numbers get thrown around and it would be easy to confuse the, confuse the two. But what this slide is showing is 40 cases per 100,000 is the range we would need to be below. Next slide, please. This information that we are presenting tonight does have an asterisk. This asterisk comes straight out of the COVID measures to inform school planning report that Rob was referring to. The science of COVID is evolving rapidly. This information reflects the current existing models and will need to be updated as more information comes in and as more guidance develops. So we thought that was important to clearly call out, you know, with this information that we are presenting. Case in point, next slide. A perfect example of how the science of COVID is evolving is the CDC and the Ohio Department of Health, Health have released new quarantine guidelines. And they are as follows. If you're exposed to a confirmed COVID-positive individual, the optimal duration of quarantine, when at all possible, is still 14 days. However, there are additional recommendations that the quarantine can be shortened to 10 days. And an additional option that the quarantine can be shortened to seven days if there is a negative COVID test administered on day five or after. So these shorter quarantine options could impact our staffing levels by allowing staff to come back to school earlier than the original 14-days mandate. And now I will turn it over to the superintendent.
Thank you, Sarah and Rob. Okay, so now what I will do is bring all that information together for you to be able to consider a criteria to bringing our kids back to school. Next slide, please. I just wanted to be able to remind the public and everyone watching that we have considered very carefully the guiding principles that our board outlined very early in this process in June. And those guidelines entail making sure that we are adhering to health and safety guidelines as much in-person or classroom learning as possible, equity throughout the process, the use of data to inform our decisions, and also making sure that we are fiscally responsible. Next slide. This is a, a risk chart that we actually shared with everyone back in June, where we looked at, at that point in time, we were talking about five different models. And we were looking at the risks as the risks are related to health and safety and also the academic risk and social and emotional risk. And so today, what we want to do is just narrow in and zoom into the two models that we have been implementing over the course of this year, and that's the blended classroom as well as distance learning. And so you can see where distance learning or blended learning falls in terms of the academic, emotional risk, in terms of it being a medium risk. And I would say that at the very beginning of when we developed this, this theory and this chart, that we would have said that blended learning would be medium risk. But as reflected by the data that was presented tonight, and the data presented tonight comes straight from the Health Department, not Laura Mitchell and not the CPS staff, but from the Health Department through their contact tracing, we have only had six confirmed transmissions within our schools. And so I would say that really, it's been pretty low risk. And then you can see that distance learning is high-risk on the emotional, social, and emotional and academic side, but it's low-risk as it relates to COVID. Next slide, please. So as we've been doing our work and working with Dr. Amin from the Health Department and Dr. Khan from Children's Hospital, we are using the science to really guide our work. And tonight, what you saw was, for the first time, we did an overlay of the community data, health data, beside the CPS health data. And so what we're saying that is that, and this is our, this is our best intelligent guess of how to make this decision. And I don't think anyone across the country really knows definitively what is the best way to make this decision. But our best attempt and thought was to be able to use the science and say that at 40, that is the timeframe that our, when we saw those confirmed cases in our community, that that put enough stress on our schools that we did not have enough staff to be able to safely operate. We believe that if we can go below 40, then we have the opportunity to bring our younger students back to school first, as well as our students with disabilities in those specialized classrooms. And I want to be able to cite a New York Times article that speaks about what, a statement that Randy Weingartner made, and she is the president of the American Federation of Teachers, the nation's second-largest teachers' union. She said that New York's plan to bring back elementary school students with stringent safety protocols could be a national model. But we believe that there is a way to be able to bring our youngest students back first, along with our specialized classrooms. We believe that if we can maintain our staff, we can do that. And we believe that if we're only bringing back our youngest students and our specialized classrooms, then that will leave more subs that are available to be able to provide for those classrooms when people become sick, because the subs will not be serving grades four through 12. We believe that in order to bring back four through 12, we should be dropping below 30. Because again, remember, that's going to be a little bit more stress on the number of staff members that we're going to have to have in order to be able to operate. So let me put this on a timeline for you. Next slide, please. So for the board's consideration, we're saying that if we are below 40, that we, and we want to be below 40 for two weeks, then we feel that it would be safe to bring back our pre-K through third grade students. And we would look at that data and start the, the clock or ticking and counting those days down, starting on January the 2nd. Two weeks later would get us to January the 16th, which is the board's work session, which would give the board the opportunity to make the decision as to whether or not they want to be, want to be able to reopen schools the week of February the 1st, or pre-K through third grade and specialized classrooms. If we're able to maintain that data and actually be able to drop below 30, we believe that it would be reasonable to bring back our fourth through eighth grade students. Again, the reason that we're dropping it from 40 to 30 is because you're putting more pressure on the system to be able to have the people in place to sub in for our staff members who may become ill. One other caveat I want to mention is that this is all really contingent upon having staff, which is the reason that we decided to go to distance learning. We have had a difficult time getting substitutes to accept the substitute assignments. So this would all be very contingent upon having a very strong recruitment plan of subs and, and then also having those subs actually show up. We believe that 30 would show that, getting down to that 30 mark, would show that our, our community is stable in terms of the health data, so much so that we believe that we would have enough staff to continue running our buildings. But again, these are all assumptions we're making, using the, the data and the science as best as we could. Another consideration is that we would bring back our ninth through 12th grade students if we're able to maintain the two weeks at 30, and you can see how it transitions out. There's a possibility of us being able to bring back students sooner. I would say that there is some risk in the stability of the community system. If we're not seeing any spread, if the numbers are truly coming down, then there's a possibility to be able to accelerate this. But what we don't want to do is open, close, open, close, open, close. We also did talk about, well, let's say if we open pre-K through third grade and some schools experience difficulty in staffing their school because of illnesses or people going into quarantine to care for others, is there a possibility that we could keep schools open, pre-K through third grade, and, and specialized classrooms, and be able to close very specific classrooms or grade levels as needed? And we've actually done that this year. There were specific classrooms that we had to close. We think that we could do that on a small scale, but to do that district-wide might be a huge challenge, but it's something that we're willing to at least explore, because we do want our kids back with us as quickly as possible. Another piece of data or information that we're using to guide this work and this decision is the next slide. And Sarah mentioned it earlier, and those are the new guidelines that are pertaining to being in quarantine. So what we don't want to do is rush people back when it's not safe for them to be back. But if people are not exhibiting symptoms, if they have a negative test and they can come back sooner, then we want to be able to bring people back sooner than the 14 days. So that also could have an impact as to how quickly we're able to transition our students back. And then the next slide outlines yet another opportunity and possibility as we think about the vaccine. We know that the first 900-something vaccines have come to Cincinnati to UC Health. We also now know that there are indication that the governor may have our school-based staff members in Phase 1B. And so that is very encouraging. We are also very open to working with UC Health Cincinnati Health Department and whoever else we need to, to offer our site as a place for people to receive the vaccine. So that concludes our report as it relates to the community health data, as well as the overlay with the CPS data, as well as a criteria to consider when thinking about bringing students back to school. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Great report, very comprehensive. So I'm going to open it up for board questions and/or comments. Mr. Lindy.
Thanks, President Jones. I want to start by echoing, I think, your positive feedback for the superintendent and the administration. And just specifically, I think the really thoughtful decision rules about January with the rationale for them, I think, just feel very rigorous and clear and helpful to us, I imagine, to you all, the parents and families, to teachers, and want to say thank you. I think there are a couple of things in looking to January that I think would also be helpful information for us to have when we get to the 16th. And I wanted to highlight it now for two reasons. First, to see what other people on the board and the superintendent thought about this idea, like it, don't like it, would love to talk about that with you. And then also, if people do like it, to give people a lot of time to make sure we had it for the 16th. But that would be some local comparison for what other local school districts are doing. I think it would, it would give me pause if for some reason, many other school districts or private schools or charter schools, in the same public health context, were for some reason making different choices. I don't know that that's true, but I think it would be a good thing for us to rule out. And so what my request was going to be, was that when we do look at the cases per 100,000, and that, that makes great sense, could we alongside look at a set of local school systems that would represent a mix of public charter and private? I was thinking somewhere around 10 total with a mix of those, and just look at, you know, what decisions have they been using while we were virtual? And what do we know about their plans going forward? I think that'd be a great piece of, way to benchmark what our decisions are against other local choices. I think that, I have other questions, but I also know that our Health and Safety Committee meeting meets tomorrow, and I think some of those we can talk about there. The only other one I think I want to pull up for the whole board is if we do wind up in a situation where we're going to bring kids back and we're in that 1-2-2 model, I, I think this is an opportunity for us to try again with how do we handle families for whom they're just not comfortable sending their kids back and they're not interested in doing the virtual. And I, I think that that's such a hard, hard thing to do. I don't know what the right approach is. It feels like no matter what we try, it's not right for somebody. So what my, my thought was going to be, is there a way to put together a team that would be a mix of parents, teacher, someone that would be a mix of parents, teacher, someone in our technology department? I don't know. But like, what's the, what's the dream team of diverse perspectives that could somehow figure something out together? I'd love to, to hear your reaction to those things in, in big picture. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bowers, I'm sorry, Mr. Messer, Mr. Messer, you were first, followed by Ms. Bowers, followed by Mr. Morosky. I'm mute, I'm mute, Ryan, I'm mute.
There we are. I want to say thank you to the superintendent and the entire team, including our partner, Dr. Khan. And to me, this is like the culmination of putting everything together we've learned. Like, we had to build things as the plane was taking off. Actually, I don't even know, it was like already in the air and in turbulence when it was handed to us in March. And, you know, I think my learning through all this is, you know, we do have to figure some things out. And you kind of got to start to figure out what it is that you're going to, you know, nobody really knew what to watch. And what I see here is you've distilled the critical components that is a very measured, data-driven, defic, uh, plan that really gives, gives me as a parent, you know, let alone me as a school board member, like, a lot of confidence. And I think that's what people are looking for right now. And this absolutely allows me to leave for the, the holidays with a lot of confidence that you continue to stay out ahead. And, you know, I'm with, you know, Mr. Lindy mentioned, you know, I'm always about the context. It's good, I think, for our, 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 um, community. Sometimes, you know, everybody thinks about where your kid is. I'm guilty of that. This is where my kid is. My learning is, everybody else is watching what we're doing. Though, yeah, you kind of have to make sure everybody understands the context, but also know so many people are watching what CPS is doing. And, you know, I think some people were frustrated when we made the call to go remote and, and kind of allow this holiday break to happen and see what happened at, at the holiday we're about to go through. And then I heard parochial schools, charter schools, private schools, some closed on a Sunday night and said, you got to be out, find what you're doing on Monday morning. And by the way, no distance, figure it out. You got some packets, you'll have this. And, you know, I think we gave people two weeks to plan. And we kind of laid out, and, and, and our kids have the devices. And I just become so much more appreciative to what we are doing here at CPS, led by you, our superintendent, the incredible group of medical experts and healthcare experts, as well as the other stakeholders that you've pulled in to help us make these decisions. So thank you. It is a great way to leave twenty twenty, twenty twenty with this plan.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers.
Yes, um, thank you to the team for the presentation. And I'm glad that Dr. Khan, just to piggyback off of Ryan, and I am pretty knowledgeable that there are some schools that are not practicing anywhere near what we're doing safety-wise. And I think when he pointed out that there are some districts who are doing the three to six, that they're not, you know, not, which is not the record. Well, I guess they make some leniency with that. But nevertheless, there are increased numbers and there are some schools that are closing. So it would be interesting to see. They're not following some of the guidelines that we are to no level. So I'm glad that, that we are doing that and thinking safety first. But just to, in addition to Ben, returning pre-K through third and specialized classrooms, I do have a question about those students and who have not been in school at all. And I, and I thought his idea of a team trying to figure out how to get a better grasp on that, because I'm very concerned about those students. There are lots of students who, who have not been even remotely logging in. So I'm concerned about that and what that number looks like. That would be ideal. And, and, and some of the things that we're doing to, to make that percentage smaller, but also to the families who are not returning back or don't think the school is safe to return back even after we, we make the decision to do that. That, that would be something I would be interested in as long, along with Mr. Lindy.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Morosky, followed by Ms. Bolton.
Thank you, President Jones. Thank you, Superintendent, Ms. Tremble Oliver, Dr. Khan. It was a good presentation, I thought, like Ryan. I'll just echo, I feel like I have some confidence that I may not have had before. Additionally, the fact that there is a vaccine and that we have offered our sites, our school sites to be community locations, I think, is awesome. That's really great. So kudos, you know. We are always wanting to be a part of the solution in the community. And I think that's a huge message. So that was really awesome to hear. So the way I, I understand it, the, the current timeline is for return to blended, obviously, right? It would be like the one we're talking about returning, we're talking about the blended model that we were doing. Is that right?
Yes, so in a conversation with the Health Department, we asked very specifically, and just to bring everyone's memory, once a week, every week, on Friday, Sarah and I are on a call with our health advisory team. And so we asked, you know, what are your thoughts about less than six feet of social distancing? And the Health Department will not sign off on that until they get some guidance from the CDC saying that that is safe to do. So that's where we are with less than six feet. In terms of the vaccine, even when the vaccine is available to, to us in terms of the general public, we still firmly believe that we need to have safety protocols in place, like the mask-wearing, the hand washing, those types of protocols, because we know that not everyone will get the vaccine. In terms of putting a team together to look at distance learning at your homeschool, we did just that. So since this became a huge conversation with the board over the last several weeks, we put a team together. That team was comprised of teachers from a variety of schools, including Montessori schools, neighborhood schools, elementary schools and high school, in addition to principals. And that was led by our Deputy Superintendent Tiani Amat. And that team gave me a report out today in terms of the pros and cons. There are pros to this and there are cons to this. And in the spirit of real transparency, it would put a, a huge amount of stress on the system to try to do two models at the exact same time. And so we have looked at this and we've looked at the schools that are saying that they can do this and think they can do it well. But a good portion of the schools say, without additional staff, because I don't have anyone to reallocate, or without additional technology, there are schools who said they just really cannot figure out how to get this done. So you may be saying, well, what about some schools that additional staff? Remember that during the teacher allocation committee work, we reassigned staff to schools who had a greater need based upon their enrollment in comparison to the schools that actually lost. And we also reallocated more than twenty teachers to CDA. So schools don't have the additional teachers on hand anymore because we've already reassigned them. So I do want to just give the board a preview what is to come in terms of our report out. We did have a team look at that. And it would be very challenging. And, and we're, I would say, at the point, at a tipping point of stressing people out to the point of not being effective at anything that they do.
Thank you. Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, I appreciate the, the report. I particularly like the fact that, you know, we, we kind of have a new purple, which is forty or something. I like the idea of using all this data and analyzing it and actually applying it. I think that's, that's great, because you've gone to another data universe to, to come up with this. And I think it's a good one. I think it's a reality. And I appreciate, I appreciate the timeline as long as there's some, as you mentioned, some flexibility that we can delay it or we can speed it up. And that's why I would just, on that, on the new forty or the new purple forty, even that needs to be maybe a little bit elastic, because there might be some other issues that, that come into play. But I thought this was very, very helpful and very useful. I am disappointed because our community has been, I think, relatively adamant or interested, I should say greatly interested in being able to provide the blended system at the school site. And if that's not a possibility, I think that will disappoint many members of the community that we don't want to disappoint. But more particularly, at least there's the possibility, and I would hope that you would encourage it if there are some schools that honestly think that they can do it, particularly our high schools, because we're just losing too many kids, very frankly, in, in, in the high school piece. But I would hope that we would still pursue some way of having both the blended at, at school site. And I understand that if the committee says it's not possible or impractical or whatever, or you need something, or you're worried about it, at least give the opportunity to some schools if they think they can do it. I think that would be great, because they can be the models for the, the schools that think that maybe they can't. But I, overall, I like the timeline. I think the efforts as to how to decide and when to decide, I think those are quite good. And I would just encourage continued work on whether or not there's a way to have at least some schools be able to offer both at their sites. So thank you, fabulous report.
So if I could respond to that, so when I met with the, the chairs of the committee led by the Deputy Superintendent, they did say, well, why don't we pilot some and see where we can actually make it work? Or, or the schools that have said that they can make it work. I will say that where we seem to get the most concern was actually at our high schools, especially subject areas where you only have one teacher who is teaching that subject. They thought that that was really challenging to be able to do. So that's something that we, that, that we did note. There's, there was another point. So we, we talked about trying a pilot to see in which schools we can make it work. Oh, the other piece is to overlay the information so we know which parents have said they want distance learning at their homeschool, to overlay that information over where we think we can actually do it and do it well. But let's say I'm making this up. Let's say there are a hundred and fifty kids at Aiken who wanted that option, and it just so happens that we can make it work at Aiken. So we're looking at those pockets where the preponderance of the kids are who want it, and can we make it happen there? So just know that it's something that we're looking at. But there are some major challenges to this, and we did try.
I appreciate that. If I could respond, I, I think, uh, high schools are, of course, part of my concern. And I think it's great to be thinking in terms of the, the pilot, if possible. And I, I like the creativity of some staffs being able to think about it. And for the high schools particularly, at this semester break, it's possible in the scheduling, if they're not necessarily going by their first semester schedule or they can make some adjustments in their second semester scheduling, maybe that could be at least addressing some of the staffing issues that might arise. But thank you for the report, and I, I appreciate the, the work.
Okay, Ms. Bowers, going, uh, last, your last short comment, please? Ms. Bowers? No? Okay. Okay, so again, thank you, Superintendent, and, and to the team for the report. I just wanted to add my, my two cents worth. This feels, I feel a lot more confident with this presentation and the direction that it's going. And even knowing that we have a little time between now and January sixteenth to really think through some of these things. And I hear some of the considerations that, that my colleagues on the board want us to, to make sure that we take into account. I am one of those persons who is advocating for consistency and stability. And one of the things I don't want to see happen, unless we have some certainty that it's going to work for us very easily, is to continue to add layers of complexity onto it. So again, we have to, we have to do one thing at a time, and we have to do it well. And I hear you saying that you're looking at these options to pilot different things, and I am very supportive of that. But I also know that as soon as we're off this broadcast tonight, there's going to be a litany of emails and requests about, with suggestions and recommendations for what we can do. And I just want us and the public to know that this is the beginning of the plan. And, and again, not wanting to add more complexity to it, but this is a good way for us to start. And so our message really needs to be consistent around that. So again, thank you for the, the great report. All right, so if we're ready to move on, we are now at the item on our agenda for hearing the public. The board prides itself on being as transparent and open as possible, consistent with the state's direction to minimize public gatherings. We are convening this video conference call to include opportunity for public comment. Here again are the specific instructions for participation in hearing of the public. Members of the public who wish to speak during the board meeting must make requests through the chat feature, including your name, your full name, your affiliation to the district, the school community, and contact information for response to questions. This request models standard practice if we were meeting in person in the ed center. Rob Wilson will be our timekeeper. Dan Wagner will allow, will let people enter into the broadcast. Once the request has been granted, you will be invited to enter. Please click on the camera icon to go interactive. After speaking, you will briefly see the welcome screen again as you transition back to the live stream meeting. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak, and they only speak once. When the timer goes off, and I will also let you know, your two minutes are up. Please refrain from discussing personnel items. We ask that your public commentary be respectful of all those listening. If we're ready, Ms. Wagner?
Yes, our first speaker is Noam Barnard.
Hello. My name is Noam Barnard. I'm here tonight. Uh-oh.
Hi there, we see you.
Okay, it said my video is disabled, so I wasn't sure. Sorry about that. First of all, I've been listening into the meeting for most of the duration, and I really want to say thank you to Rosky, Mr. Lindy, Ms. Mitchell, Ms. Jones as well, for your attention, to concerns about COVID in the schools. I'm impressed that things are being handled in such a way. So I appreciate that. Tonight, I'm here on behalf, I'm in solidarity, solidarity with the Young Activist Coalition regarding some concerns about CPD in our schools. I was looking at the twenty-two fifty-five policy, the anti-racism policy. And there were some things that concerned me, seemed like, despite some efforts, in, in that policy stuff that's going on that seems like systemic racism may be an issue. And I see some like similarities with some statistics associated with discipline rates in, inside Cincinnati Public Schools that carry over into concerns.
Mr. Barnard, I'm sorry, but your two minutes are up.
Okay. You had what I had to say. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Our next speaker is Youssef Manir, and then Brad Dilman is after Youssef. Go ahead, Youssef.
Hello, my name is Youssef Manir. I am a CPS senior, and I am the president of Young Activist Coalition. I am a CPS senior, and I am the president of Young Activist Coalition. I'm here today, like I have in the past few months, because Cincinnati Public Schools is actively criminalizing students, and to deny that would be to deny the data and lived experiences of Black and Brown students. We are here today to demand the complete removal of police and punitive policies from CPS schools, an increase in psychologists, social workers, and counselors on school campuses, and the implementation of well-funded, well-researched, and well-implemented restorative and transformative justice. Now, the first thing I want to do today is thank board members Morosky, Jones, Bowers, and Bowers for either meeting with us or scheduling a meeting for us to talk to you all about our demands. Board members Messer, Lindy, and Bolton, we are still waiting on a response from you since our email to you on November 27th. We will follow that up with another email today. We would appreciate greatly the opportunity to talk to all of you for more than the two minutes that we are allotted here. Now, I also want to talk about the data that Mr. Barnard mentioned previously. I want to talk about how, despite the fact that Black students only make up 63% of the student population, they are given 83% of in-school suspensions, 86% of out-of-school suspensions, 87% of expulsions, and 85, make up 85% of all referrals to law enforcement. This data is clear. You have this data, and now that you know for sure, now that if by any chance you didn't know it, you have an obligation to do something about this. You can't just keep sticking to the status quo, because we deserve better. Now, in terms of the implementation plan for what we are demanding, I want to make it clear that we're not just advocating for a snap and making everything happen all at once. We understand that things take time, but we would like to see an effort made. We would like to see the immediate pulling out of CPD and the immediate switching over in elementary schools of the superior discipline to restorative and transformative justice.
Mr. Manir, your two minutes are up. Thank you.
Thank you, board member.
Brad Dilman is up, and Ashley McCartney will follow Brad.
Thank you, Board President Jones and board members, for allowing me to speak to you tonight. My name is Brad Dilman. I serve as facilitator for peer assistance and review in Cincinnati Public Schools. As many of you are aware, the state legislature has passed and Governor Dewine has signed into law House Bill 404 in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. One of the provisions of law allow local boards to exempt from completing evaluations of teachers, administrators, school counselors, superintendents. Board determines that to do so would be impossible or impractical during our current health emergency. The peer review panel, made up of both principals and teachers, has been working with talent and development through LaunchEd to create both training and best practice to transition our district to the newer version of the Ohio Teacher Evaluation System, OTES 2.0. This newer evaluation system moves from a culture of compliance-driven checklists to a more collaborative process that truly supports teachers' professional growth, influencing student academic growth and achievement, as well as the overall well-being of our school communities. This transition to OTES 2.0 requires much more collaboration and review of teachers' practices based on extensive use of data-driven approaches. I believe one of the board members was part of writing OTES 2.0, and so she could probably give you more information about that transformative approach to teacher evaluation. Many, with so many completing priorities this school year, and moving from remote learning to blended learning, back to remote learning, and hopefully eventually to in-person learning, I encourage the board to consider using the state waiver. Free from the artificial time constraints of compliance of the software system, principals and teachers confer further the conversation already begun around using data for instruction and cultural competencies. Through LaunchEd, principals and teachers can receive further training and guidance on how to productively hold these conversations, using evidence-based approaches surrounding student growth and achievement. I ask for your consideration in taking advantage of House Bill 404's waiver for this school year. Thank you.
Ashley McCartney, you're up, and Kendra Phelps, you will follow Ashley.
Good evening, board members. My name is Ashley McCartney, and I am currently a second-year teacher at AWL. I've worked in CPS since college, and my teaching life has never consisted of anywhere else. I appreciate my school, my staff, and my students, and while it has been one whirlwind of a year, we're making it through. Last year, I was on staff at a building that helped pilot the new OTES system. Evaluations for last year ended up canceled due to COVID, and school leadership did the thinking about how the current constraints of evaluation can be inequitable for staff in this new normal. Much like standardized testing, the ways that teachers should be evaluated should be changed, or best case, abolished during this pandemic. There are so many things in, excuse me, there are so many things in play that educators from behind a computer screen don't have control over. How do you assess attentiveness or behavior in an online class? Students have a million things happening on their ends of the screens, and these are impossible for teachers to control. Teachers and students are doing the best they can during this time, and as the constraints of COVID constantly change, we should be willing and able to change with it. Another consideration is that teachers and building leaders are either barely trained or not trained at all with this new program. With the current abilities and workloads of staff across the district, training is not only near impossible to make happen, but is just another stressor for us. Consider altering or skipping altogether these teacher evaluations this year. Teachers, building leaders, all of us need peace of mind that we won't have our standings in our building at stake when remote learning is so unpredictable as is. Evaluations bring in so many things that can't be controlled, student attention, assessment validity, and more than anything, student comprehension day-to-day. Training is lengthy, difficult, and not feasible. We need stability, because this year is new for all of us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Kendra Phelps is up next, and Owen Durico is after Kendra.
Good evening, President Jones and fellow board members. On behalf of the teachers and principals of the peer review panel, I'd like to thank you for your consideration in waiving performance evaluations for teachers and school counselors for this 2021 school year, except for those individuals who are going through the credentialing process for licensure and career advancement reasons. I want to share with you how excited we are. We had a meeting even today to talk about the plans for professional development around OTES 2.0, some of the key components around those collaborative conversations that need to happen to foster teacher growth. Also, there are some exciting changes to the performance indicators contained in the OTES 2.0 rubric, and there needs to be some professional development and awareness for teachers and administrators on those changes, like the caller before just said, and some understanding on how you actually can identify evidence of those indicators in a situation like a remote learning situation. There's also plans to have professional development on establishing professional growth goals for teachers. There's a new component in OTES called focus areas that many principals and teachers are not aware of, and just really giving our staff members information and professional development on how to use these components effectively, not to mention high-quality student data and the expectation to use data to inform your instruction. So, again, receiving a waiver from completing the formal annual evaluation process for this year would provide the perfect opportunity for more genuine and meaningful implementation of those aforementioned components, because the focus will be on the conversation about evidence and not on timeline.
Thank you, Ms. Phelps.
Okay. Owen Durico is up next, and Lauren Sample is after Owen.
My name is Owen Durico, and I am calling solidarity with the Young Activist Coalition and in support of their demands for CPS to completely cut ties with CPD and remove SROs from our schools, as well as the implementation of well-funded, well-planned systems of transformative and restorative justice. People who have called already have described to you the statistics that back these decisions, and so I won't repeat that to you, but I will address a common counterargument to it, which is that our SROs have good relationships with the students in our schools, and that bettering those relationships in places where they are problematic is the best way forward. On a fundamental level, the role of police is to criminalize. That is an indisputable fact, and trying to alter their role into something different is an inefficient use of resources at its most basic level. Young Activist Coalition, in order to address this, has today actually launched a petition. And if you are viewing this and you believe that the presence of SROs in our schools, as the statistics gathered from Civil Rights Data Collective have demonstrated, if you believe that this is problematic and harmful to our students, then we would urge you to sign this petition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lauren Sample, you're up next, and Ozzy Davis is after Lauren.
Thanks for, so the board and the superintendent all seem to agree that our kids need to get back to school, but this new timeline doesn't really give me a lot of confidence or seem very optimistic that we will, in fact, return to school anytime soon. And to me, it just feels like the administration keeps kicking the can down the street to string along those of us parents who want to return to school. So, this new 40 per 100,000 criteria, that was when we were doing a 14-day quarantine for any staff that was exposed. So, Laura Mitchell did mention that that might be changed. So, if CPS does change that criteria with the updated CDC recommendations, wouldn't we not have to meet the 40 per 100,000 criteria? Again, I just feel like we're hearing a lot of, we could see, make some adjustments, you know, we could do this, and it just seems like you're stringing us along so we won't leave the district. And so, truly, if staffing is the main barrier to get our kids back to school, CPS should be doing everything they can to increase the pool of subs between now and January 16th, which is when we're making a decision. So, robocalls, emails, let people know how they can apply. In a district this size, surely there have to be adults who are qualified to be subs. In spite of their wonderful teachers, my kids are getting burned out on virtual learning. They're kindergarten and second grade. My kindergartner has meltdowns daily about getting on another video call, and I can't imagine the high schoolers who are all day on video calls. So, I just, CPS needs to get kids back to school sooner than maybe end of January. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis, you're up, and then our last speaker will be Julie Sellers.
Hey, everybody.
Hello.
Please, please excuse the shortened salutation. I just, I'll let you know that I love you, but I got to speed up, because I only got a minute and 48 seconds left. Hey, I'm very proud of you all. I'm proud of the administration, the staff, the teachers, the parents, the families. Those four-year graduation rates looking absolutely incredible, and that's testament to you all's hard work. And I want to say thank you for being able to, you know, hold the fort as so much drama was coming your way during the season of COVID. I also want to say, and I know my time is short, so let me go faster, the presentation that Josh Harden gave tonight was one of the best presentations I've ever heard at a school board meeting, and the relationship between athletics and ABC is one of the best things going. It doesn't get enough marketing from CPS. It's one of the best things going to CPS. And I don't know how we, we, and I say we, allowed a 40% cut to Schedule E when it's clear that our priorities need to be more centrally focused around pushing that athletics department and that relationship with ABC. Finally, Mike Morosky, I love you, brother. Stephanie Scott, I love you, sister. Nia Balki, I love you, sister. Every one of you school board members, thank you. 2256 is monumental. Ryan, were you talking about us leading the way? 2256. I appreciate y'all from the bottom of my heart. From the bottom of my heart. God bless you. Have a very, very, very happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, and Happy New Year. Y'all end it this year with a big, big bang, and I'm looking forward to January 16th. Peace.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
We have one more speaker before Julie. We had a parent that dropped off and that just reconnected. So, Abby, go ahead and speak. You're next.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you. Hi, I'm here tonight.
Can you click your camera?
I did. Let me click it again.
You did? Okay. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay. I'm here tonight as a CPS parent in solidarity with the Young Activist Coalition to ask that you break all ties with the Cincinnati Police Department and remove police from all of our schools immediately. Additionally, to provide our students with the best education possible, I demand that you fully invest in a social safety net and transformative justice policy to replace the current punitive system that we have. If student success and achievement is a priority of the board, and how can, then how can Black and Brown students be expected to succeed if they are more likely to be criminalized and overly disciplined by our school system? If student safety is a priority of the board, then how can we ensure that our Black and Brown students are safe and feel safe if there are police in schools, knowing what we know about the relationships between police and Black folks in 2020? Historically, the institution of police was created as an organized slave patrol, organized by and for white people to protect their financial investment in the ongoing perpetuation of violently dehumanizing Black people through enslavement and white supremacy. The policing of Black bodies is rooted in the effort to continue slavery. Knowing this history and contextualizing it with the up-to-date data that shows the continuation of this white supremacist violence, I implore you to listen to the students that have organized to tell you to get CPD out of CPS and replace SROs with truly transformative justice. Transformative justice will allow students that are struggling in our schools to access help and rise up to their full potential. Stop perpetuating white supremacy. Stop criminalizing our kids. Remove CPD from our schools and fully invest in a transformative approach to justice for our kids. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. This evening, I would like to say, and second Kendra's comments about how difficult it is to follow when the policy and the committees are discussing changes, and I would like to thank the Policy and Equity Committee for providing those documents to us and hopefully to the public prior to the meeting so that we can follow the discussion more easily and that we can see what the wording is as it is being changed and follow, track those changes. I hope that the student achievement, if they have documents, we can also get copies of those documents, that we can follow those during the meetings, because when meetings are held in person, that, those documents were always available, and it's really making it difficult for us participating in meetings to have all of the information that we need. I'm happy that the board will be adjusting the implementation of OTES. I think that that's a smart decision that is being made this evening. But I would also like to say that Ohio is currently a no-travel state, and anyone traveling to Ohio must return to their own states and quarantine. We must remember that this pandemic is a national crisis. We are currently seeing more deaths per day than what we saw on 9/11. Day last week, the following week, day after day after day, we're having more deaths. And so, I do think that I'm glad that the district has come up with some guidelines. If I have, when I'm looking at the CPS dashboard for COVID cases, we've had 548. Those cases, there were very few cases up until the end of October, and then they just started skyrocketing. And I'm not sure the end of October is when we hit the 40 cases per 100,000, and I would like to see that information. But after that, after Halloween, Thanksgiving, cases started escalating. I would like to see what happens with Americans. And I'm not sure the end of October is when we hit the 40 cases per 100,000, and I would like to see that information. But after that, after Halloween, Thanksgiving, cases started escalating. I would like to see what happens with Americans as we move into the holidays for Christmas and New Years, and that's going to be the determination of when we will be able to return to school in person. Right now, cases are at 70 per 100,000, and it's just, they're all over the place. It's spread everywhere, and people are really trying to stay in. And so I'm not positive 40 is the appropriate number, but I am going to go back when the cases in the district started escalating and find out what that number was. So I do appreciate you looking at that, and I'm glad that we are using data. I do know that there are some parents who are frustrated by this, and I'm sorry that their children are at the ages that they are, but we are in a once-in-a-century pandemic, and this is no fault of the district. And there are serious COVID problems even in the private, the procreo, the charter schools, the suburban schools. This is national, and it is not something that anyone should be pointing the finger at CPS on. We are using the data, and if there are some people who don't like the data and how it's being used, and they think it should be changed, they should be reaching out to the agency and the health departments and health commissioners. So thank you for everything this evening.
Thank you.
Ms. Jones, we have one last student who was able to reconnect that signed up early. Her name is Ruth. Go ahead, Ruth.
I'm also here with the Young Activist Coalition to ask that the SROs would restore transformative justice be implemented. I know other students have talked about the statistics, and I would like to talk about the important issue of keeping students safe in schools. So based on the statistics that have been presented about the disproportionate punishment of Black and Brown students, we know that police do not protect Black and Brown students and criminalize them. And obviously, the safety of students in our schools is very important, especially with the fear of violence. However, police do not prevent these tragedies, and according to the ACLU, because of how rare these tragedies are, there's not enough empirical evidence to actually prove whether SROs even are even able to prevent school shootings and other violence in schools to happen. In order to prevent this, schools invest in proactive measures rather than reactive measures and divest from the police departments so that all of our students can be safe in the schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, as I understand, we have been having some technical problems, so I was glad that people got reconnected. Treasure Wagner, does that complete our public hearing?
Yes, ma'am. She was the last speaker. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, does anyone have any kudos? Ms. Bowers, please unmute.
Thank you, President Jones. I would like to give kudos to the following: Ms. Sarah Morales, Ms. Casey Fisher, Ms. Cynthia Egbaumia, and I believe the district parent coordinator, Mr. Paul McMillan, who facilitated an excellent parent information Facebook Live opportunity. And then Ms. Jessica Shelley, she presented also. A lot of information to our parents answering questions that sometimes they're not able to get responses in a larger setting like the board meeting, but I thought this platform was excellent for a nice dialogue. And the key thing that I got from this was the district emphasizing parents being partners in this district learning experience, and that's key. Parents are our partners. So I just wanted to give kudos to all of those people who presented. It was excellent information, accessing resources, an opportunity for parents to engage in, and I just think Paul did an excellent job.
Thank you. Additional kudos? Okay. Ms. Bates, retirements?
I have several retirements to acknowledge. From our civil service personnel, Julia Indalacio from Recruitment and Staffing, Victoria Price, LPN. And someone that I want to highlight that we have acknowledged prior, but she has just been such an integral part of the board, especially those of us who worked on Finance Committee, and that's Assistant Treasurer Amy Tuarick, who today, there was a tribute on Zoom for Amy. And on behalf of the board, I commended her for her work with the district and congratulated her on her retirement. So we want to thank all of these people for their service to our district and to our children and wish them well.
Thank you, Ms. Bates. Okay, so moving into our Board Matters item tonight, I just wanted to give the board an update on where we were with our board development and planning activity scheduled for the Saturday, January 16th. Following up the board's suggestions about securing a facilitator, I had some conversation with Mr. Messer. We basically identified three potential facilitators, one of whom I already know cannot, is not available on the 16th, so that leaves us down to two, one of whom is OSBA. And the other one, Mr. Messer, I don't know if you were able to reach her as yet, but you were gonna follow up on that?
Yeah, and I got a pretty firm, maybe. She's available, and she just said, "Hey, it's just, if you think I can do this." But, you know, she's kind of a black belt process excellence, but the GE formalized training, she is employed at Johnson &amp; Johnson. And Preschool Promise was going through an exercise earlier this year, and somebody reached out, Sally, said, "Do you happen to know any facilitators?" And I said, "Well, there's this one that is always highly recommended," and they brought her in. And I got so many, like, thank you notes, like, "Wow, how'd you find this woman?" And, you know, and sometimes it's good to have somebody on the outside who they're just there to facilitate and to pull and to kind of put it into a framework. So, you know, knowing her skill sets and kind of what we're trying to do here, I think she could be really good, so.
Okay, so when I spoke to the representative at OSBA, I told them that I would get back to them by Friday. Is it possible that you can let me know what her status is so we can kind of make that decision very soon?
Yep.
Okay.
I will be in touch with you tomorrow.
Okay. And then, as part of, as we start to develop our agenda, it's very clear. I mean, I have written down just some kind of broad notes about what we want to cover, but I think more importantly, I wanted to get a better sense from board members kind of what your expectations are, including subject matters. We have two, we have, wait a minute. I gotta read my own notes here. We have a couple of very, we have some huge sort of areas or topics to cover, which could potentially take up the entire day. And one, of course, is we tried to capture the essence of what this new CPS design would look like, and all of that is sort of an umbrella for refreshing the strategic plan. So that can all go up under one umbrella. And included in that is the area or the subject matter that we just talked about under the Student Achievement Committee regarding establishing the priorities and perhaps working with the superintendent on that. So that's a huge area. And then, secondly, we have the school planning to talk about. So we're gonna get more information, and we need to make a decision about that. So other than that, are there any other areas that you can think of that we might, I might have missed? Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, I think it's very important to limit it as best we can because of the size of those topics, but I do think it will be useful, kind of in association with that, the treasurer, and I know that she's been sharing this with the performance team as well, a new budget process that might help us figure out not only this coming budget, but more particularly a process that's much more engaging. So I don't think it would take a long time. It's more of a sharing of information and getting the board's reaction to that proposed process.
Okay, and how does this tie, is this, how does this tie? Because I believe we have a budget hearing scheduled as well on the 11th.
Yeah, this is not even talking about the budget, but how we're, the hearing is to hear the public and see the presentation. This would be her sharing a new proposal as to how to put the budget together, and that would be different.
Okay.
Than the hearing.
Treasure Wagner. Treasure Wagner. Unmute. Unmute. Treasure Wagner, you have unmuted.
I am unmuted.
You are now. Thank you.
Okay. The budget hearing that's scheduled in January is the tax budget hearing. It really is not about the funding budget, so.
That's it. Okay. Okay. Any other comments, Mr. Messer?
Yeah, I think you laid out a very crisp plan, and I couldn't agree more with Ms. Bolton that less is more, so we can really spend quality time. But I think that the only kind of output for that then is, you know, if we kind of align on this refreshed strat plan with the 2021 look, you know, make some feedback and then say, "All right, as a board, what do we want to accomplish in the year ahead? And is there, you know, anything outside of the plan? Just anything like it is kind of taking it in our role into the community and that type of thing? So maybe we put, you know, our board goals and objectives for the year and some of the things that we want to set the board sights on to support all the work."
Yes, and as a reminder of that, Mr. Messer, I believe you accepted an assignment at our last retreat.
And I am ready.
Okay, cool. That ties right, that ties perfectly to what you just said. Good deal.
Perfect.
Okay. Did I see another hand? Mr. Lindy?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I think this agenda sounds good, and I have nothing that I want to add to it. I think we had an important conversation at the top of the meeting on the SAC committee notes about the idea of a scorecard. That does continue to feel really important to me, just to get on one page, what are the most important outcomes we want to win on this year? And how do we create regular visibility into how we're doing against those? And I think that's a great conversation for us to have together. I think it sounds like that fits squarely with the topic that you outlined, and I'm really looking forward to it. And just that I'd like to offer a couple...
Okay, thank you. So my last two comments are actually suggestions. I would suggest that we, that the meeting time be 8:30 to 2:00 with lunch, and that we do it in-house.
Sounds great.
Yep.
Any objection to that? Everybody okay with that?
I might eat separately, so I'm very far away from people when I have my mask off. But other than that, I think it's a very good idea.
So hearing no objection to that will get things nailed down. Thank you so much. All righty. So we're ready to move on to our resolutions. Mr. Morawski, please present the following resolution.
With pleasure, President Jones. It is my honor to present a resolution adopting new board policy 2256 Anti-Racism Policy. I present the policy as written, or the resolution, rather, as written.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. I do have, I do have one thing, if I could.
Yeah, go ahead.
First of all, let me say, I think this is a dynamic policy. I don't want to change, I think the content of it is right. However, when you read it, my concern, and we should have noticed this a long time ago, but my concern is it's still too long. So I have a suggestion about how we might shorten it without getting rid of the information. So the last half of it where it starts on, it's like the, let me pull it out here. It's where it says, "The Anti-Racism Policy Directives." That's the heading. And all of that, all of that, the rest of it is all procedure. So my suggestion would be just to add, to perhaps add a statement that reads something like this to kind of end it. Because policy is supposed to be the what, and procedure is the how, right? So if we said something like, "The district administration will be responsible for developing procedures and standards of practice that address these areas, and then highlight each one of those subareas and put hyperlink on them so that we don't lose the information." And the reason I'm suggesting hyperlinks is because I know that this was a community initiative, and I don't want to minimize their involvement, and I think it's important to show the work that they did. But I think if we do a hyperlink, which we done before in policies that were pretty long, if they click on the hyperlink, they can pull up all of those, all of that information. But that's just a suggestion. I don't want to change the content or anything, but I just want to make it a little more specific to the what. And if people are interested in seeing the how, they can click on the hyperlink. That's...
Can you, can you repeat? When you leaned over, you cut out. Can you repeat exactly where you're talking about in the policy?
In the policy, on page, hold on. On page, it doesn't have any pages. It's the, it's the first, second page, the paragraph that starts "Anti-Racism Policy Directive."
I'm looking at it, yeah.
Well, those directives are the how-to. This is, this is what we're gonna do. And I'm suggesting that the policy be very short in terms of what, you know, what is it that we're directing? But that these directives are the how do we direct it? And I see that as an administration function. But I am saying, rather than cut it out, that if we put hyperlinks on it, somehow capture the essence of what it is, but hyperlink it so that if people who are reading it from our public or anybody can click on the hyperlink and this will come up, and they can see the work that the committee did on it. Does that make sense?
It does make sense. I mean, I don't, I don't see, I don't see the issue, yeah, I mean, I don't see the issue of just adding hyperlinks. It's not changing anything. It's just making it...
No, that's the point. It's just making it shorter. I don't, I don't want to change the wording or anything in it. Just hyperlink it.
It's fine, yeah, I mean, that's, it didn't change anything, yeah.
Okay. Any other, do, anybody have any thoughts about that? Any other thoughts, Ms. Bolton?
No other thoughts, just tell me where the policy ends.
Okay, well, I think it would end after, it says...
I can tell you, I can, I got it right here, I can do it too long. Yeah, it would end, if that's okay, President Jones, I don't want to, if that's all right.
Yeah, go ahead.
It would then, Ms. Bolton, so when you get to the piece on page three on the PDF that we have in our packet, the red line piece of the bold holds itself in all district and school-type decision-makers, et cetera. To that end, the board is committed to annual self-evaluation. That would be kind of the end of the policy per se, and the Anti-Racism Policy Directives would include that first paragraph, but then hyperlink the rest of, sort of, the board directs people to do A, B, C, and D, and so folks want to read it. Now, of course, if somebody wants a printed copy, this version is going to have to be on file so they can, if they just want a printed copy, because they won't be able to hyperlink from the printed. But if I'm hearing you right, it would end after, "To that end, et cetera."
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
But this material would not be lost. It would be... But this material would not be lost, it would be part of.
Right.
Right.
Right. It would continually, yes, not asking to delete it, just shorten it so that it's, it's really specific to the, to the what, and then they can click on for this is how we plan to do it. Those are the directives. Go ahead, Ms. Bolton.
Yeah, I think that's a good suggestion. And I would also say, as we pass this, to, and I know they would, to encourage the administration to incorporate those items that are in the policy itself as well as what we're hyperlinking or whatever, as part of the administrative guidelines. And then publish those guidelines too, because sometimes people feel like we say something, but then that maybe it doesn't happen in the guidelines, or they can't access the guidelines. So just with passage, if the administration is encouraged to follow these actually committee and community suggestions and their guidelines, I think that would be great.
Yep.
Or administrative rules, or whatever they're called.
Right. Okay, any other, any additional discussion? Yes, Mr. Morosky?
I would just like to, if I may, just kind of wrap up real quick and say, I've said this a number of times, particularly in committee, but I need to send a heartfelt thanks to not only my six colleagues here who have been extremely instructive and helpful in getting this to this version, but also to Nia Baucki at COHER who helped convene our task force, all of the members of the task force in the community, all of the eyes that have been on this for the past six months. It's just, it does feel like a true community effort, and it will be owned by all of us as we move forward. And I think it was former member Davis who was speaking in his comments about a strong close to the year with the ABC report with Mr. Harden and Ms. Mitchell's report. And feeling like, without getting too philosophical or emotional, it does feel like there's some more solid footing under us than there has been in some time. And I just think this is a great way to round out this calendar year and go into next year and then the next school year. So I just want to heartfelt kudos and thanks to everybody. And then last, Dave for last, Beth for last, Ms. Stephanie Scott, the Assistant General Counsel, for sort of managing all of this input and these changes and revisions. So kudos to everybody, and appreciate everyone's help getting to this point, it's great.
Okay, let's get this baby up for a vote. Ms. Wagner?
Mrs. Bates?
Hi.
Ms. Bolton?
Hi.
Mrs. Bowers?
Absolutely.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes, thank you. Yay. All right, Mr. Morosky, you're up again for the next question.
All right, I'm up again. I can't go run laps around my house.
Tomorrow morning, you can do that.
Right. And Madam President, can we make sure we don't applaud too often? Because the two German Shepherds decided to join the meeting, so. Let's do a, you know, whatever.
All right, Mr. Morosky.
Oh, thank you, James. Thank you, James. A resolution amending board policy 7540.03. I would like to call out, because I promised I would, the few parts of this that are substantively different that were based on Mrs. Bates's recommendations. And you'll see in the red line, the first, anytime the word "board" is there, it's struck and replaced with "administration," importantly. Secondly, then, it cross-references the now newly adopted Board Policy 2256, saying things such as Cincinnati Public Schools will not tolerate online activities that violate the Board of Education's Anti-Racism Policy 2256. I present the resolution as written.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call and roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Hi.
Ms. Bolton?
Hi.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Hi.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Thank you. Mr. Morosky, your last resolution.
Last resolution, a resolution amending board policy 7540.04, staff network and internet acceptable use and safety. Again, I promised I would call out the substantive changes similar to the last one. At times, it says the Board of Education that has been struck and replaced with Cincinnati Public Schools. There was another piece substantive difference as we were going through this. So just as a reminder to the public and my colleagues, this was, is talking about the acceptable use and safety of employees' sort of devices. And at one point, we bring up, because I thought it was maybe timely, is that CPS and its employees may not use the district's computers or network for political purposes in violation of state law and the coast agreement. We just thought, you know, erring on the side of caution would be good, so that was included. One last substantive addition was employees are advised that using personal networks or personal accounts to conduct district business could result in the creation of public records. An employee who conducts business on a personal device or account may be directed to provide access to that device or account. The refusal to provide access may be grounds for discipline up to and including termination. We thought it was important to include that language because as, you know, publicly elected officials know, your personal accounts, your Gmail account can be used as a public record. We know that. But we felt it was important that, you know, probably most folks don't know that. And so that's why we included it. And I present the resolution as written.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call and roll.
We don't have a second yet.
I'm sorry, is there a second? I thought we did. We didn't, I'm sorry.
Second, yeah. I got you.
I got you. Thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call and roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Hi.
Ms. Bolton?
Hi.
Mrs. Bowers?
Hi.
Mr. Lindy?
Hi.
Mr. Messer?
Hi.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Okay, Ms. Bowers, please present the next resolution.
Can I present the order that I have, or is it in this particular order in the paper? I'm okay to present a resolution amending board policy 7550, is that okay? If I do it in that order?
Yes.
I am presenting this resolution as written. Use of district-owned equipment.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call and roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Hi.
Ms. Bolton?
Hi.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Okay, Ms. Bowers, would you present the final resolution of the night?
Yeah, I have a resolution amending board policy 7550.01, use of electronic communication devices, and primarily some of the stuff that was removed with some dated language, and reiterating the essential use of electronic communication devices in the current time. I present this resolution as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? Okay, Ms. Wagner?
Mrs. Bates?
Hi.
Ms. Bolton?
Hi.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Hi.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes, thank you. Okay, superintendent, do you have a report?
I do not. I do want to make one statement. As noted in the superintendent's recommendation, I am recommending that we move forward with OKC, the modified version of it for this school year, meaning that we would go through one cycle, which would involve one walkthrough and one observation. And so that is embedded within the superintendent's recommendations. Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the recommendations of the superintendent? They're moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Thank you, Treasurer Wagner, please call and roll.
Mrs. Bates? Ms. Bolton?
Hi.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve the report of the treasurer?
They're moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call and roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Hi.
Ms. Bolton?
Hi.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Hi.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes, thank you. Any inquiries and updates tonight? Mr. Lindy?
Thanks, President Jones. I have, I have two, a very short inquiry, and then I wanted to just say something to wish folks a happy holidays. The inquiry one first, I, last year was an odd year to be a first year on the school board. And I actually don't know much about what we do for summer school. This topic had come up a couple of times in terms of, you know, are there going to be efforts to get kids caught up for learning that they may have missed? My request is not necessarily in this meeting, but I would love to learn more about what we've done in the past for summer school and what we're thinking about for this year. I'm happy to do that offline, happy to do that by email or taking a call with somebody. But I'd love to learn more about what we have done and what we're thinking about for the future. And then my, the other piece here was, I just wanted to end by sharing a brief message of love and appreciation during the holiday season. I think it is a challenging time, chiefly with the pandemic, where we now have 300,000 people who have died in this country, with another 3,000 dying every day, but also with this turbulent and unprecedented presidential transition and an ongoing fight for racial justice. For so many reasons, this is a time of year where in different traditions, we celebrate light in the time of darkness, whether that's Hanukkah in my family, or Christmas, or Kwanzaa, or Diwali, or other celebrations in other families. I think for so many groups, we tend to think about winning against tremendous odds. And this just felt particularly resonant in this year of closures and reopenings and more closures. With all of these challenges and loss, this message of hope against despair and a belief in brighter days ahead felt particularly powerful. And so at least from this board member, I wanted to wish everyone at CPS and everyone listening to this meeting a very happy holiday season. And I wanted to wish you a 2021 that is filled with much more light. And so thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lindy. Yes. Mr. Messer?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I think we are kind of nearing the end of this crazy year. And, you know, I want to say, not just as a board member, but as a parent, and I thank the superintendent and the team for all they've done. And then on top of that, just the frontline workers. And as I sat here at this desk all day at work, you know, hearing two homeschool iPads going on in surrounding rooms, and the reminder that our teachers, teachers and our parents have not let up. They have just driven and driven. And is it ideal? No. Is it how they thought they'd be teaching? No. But, you know, it, like, I haven't even seen anything like halfway. Is it because I'm a school board member? No, because everywhere I go, nobody's complaining that their teachers and their parents, as a rule, aren't working their tails off. I've heard plenty say, this isn't ideal, and I got to get the kids out of the house and all of that. But I've yet to hear anybody in my orbit say, and these people aren't doing what they need to do. And I just want to say, I'm in awe of the people who have stood up in this district on behalf of our children. And of course, those people throughout the community that made it happen, but at the leadership of our superintendent, who just kept looking forward when everybody was at every different direction, everybody had a different opinion, somebody had to wake up and keep walking. And I can't even imagine how she does it, let alone in heels. And then that's allowed the, the, that passion and the focus and everything to stay on our children and our frontline workers. I really, really appreciate and thank them for their dedication.
Thank you, Mr. Messer, and I am applauding quietly. Thank you. All righty. Any other, any other inquiries and updates? If not, we'll move on to assignments. No assignments? Okay, Ms. Bolton?
Yes, I was in a meeting recently and was informed that the Ohio School for the Deaf provides for high school students in Ohio, and we may already know this, online instruction taught by instructors who are certified or certificated. And it can, the high school students that participate from around the state who are wanting to learn American Sign Language, actually it can count as a language requirement. And there are limits on what can, you know, how many students they can take, but it is something available to all high school students around the state. And an assignment would be to see if that is something we do or see if that's something that could be viable for next year as the language requirement or as even a career path piece. So I would like the superintendent to look into that program offering. Thank you.
Okay. Any other assignments? Okay, this is the last board meeting of the year. Next year, right? So we're going to end this meeting saying happy holidays to everybody, stay safe. We'll be in touch and we'll get ready for a brand-new year and a brand-new beginning for Cincinnati Public Schools. Okay, having no other business before us, I declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night and a good holiday, everybody.
All right.